Do we have any applicants online? Are we all set Heather?
Uh, yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, this is the town of Henry at a zoning board of appeals meeting for September 3rd. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, my name is Beth Mossworth and I am co-chairperson this evening. In the event of an emergency, we do have two emergency exits, you may exit straight out or on either side. Please have your cell phone silenced during the meeting. For the benefit of everyone here, applicants will be called up in the order in which they were advertised. You may go ahead and explain anything else that you would like to highlight in your application or otherwise further explain. And we will start off this evening with um meeting, oh yeah, roll call, Robert Peckham is absent, Beth Mossworth is here, John Miglari.
Here.
Christopher Chamberlain, Kristen Chamberlain, sorry.
Here.
Heather Robinson.
Present.
Timothy Harrington.
Present.
Aaron Lehman.
Present.
Thank you, may I have a motion regards to the meeting minutes of August 6th?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, with regard to the meeting minutes for August 6th, 2025, I move to approve.
Second.
Seconded by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstained because I wasn't there last time.
Abstained, thank you Chris. Carrie. Okay, application 2025-059 by Christopher Oluwesi. Did I say that right? Come on up. If there's anything that you would like to highlight or further explain, please do so.
Uh, not really, just the same as last time, I was here a few years ago. Um, just honestly for privacy and just for the safety of my little ones. And we actually just got a pool too installed. So uh, you know, kids gonna be out there bathing suits, whatever, you know what I mean? So it's just the more privacy I have, the better it is.
Right.
That was pretty much.
So your plan is just to do it on the one side, right? Not all the way along back?
Nope, just one side, so it's gonna be off the house, 25 feet, 80 feet down and then 40 feet coming in.
So approved previously, didn't install, and then there was a gap?
So what happened was I was gonna do it myself and I tore my shoulder and my knee up. So I couldn't really do it anymore and as you can see, like it actually hasn't healed very well now. Now that we have the pool, I just hired somebody to have them do it.
Okay, understand. Are there any further questions from members of the board? Anyone from the audience that may wish to speak in regards to this application? This application is closed.
Madam Chair, with regards to application ZBA 2025-059 for an area variance, I move to approve. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held public hearings, has considered all the relevant information and has considered the potential benefits to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood and community in relation to such variance, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the characters of the neighborhood. Um, this is a corner lot and the resident is looking for privacy on that side. And also add that this was approved uh, three years ago. Um, for the same. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. It's the side of his house and looking for privacy. The variance requested is not substantial. The variance will not result in a negative uh, effect to the physical or environmental conditions as it is a corner lot and he needs some privacy as he has a pool put in there and uh, small kids. The difficulty related to the variance was self-created. But again, the applicant is looking for privacy. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Harrington, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, you're all set.
Thank you. What's my next step?
You're going to get notice from the town.
Okay.
Of the approval. Um, probably in the next few days, but I would give it at least 48 hours, you can always contact the building department.
Okay.
To go from there.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Application 2025-060 for Anna Gosson and Joshua Mayman. Please just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joshua Mayman, I reside at Six Ravens Road.
Thank you.
Could you just recap what you would wanna do for your property?
Yes, we would like to extend a one-car garage into a two-car garage. Um, the way the lot line is, it makes it difficult to get the extension to a two-car garage without requesting a variance past the uh, what is it, eight-foot setback, I believe, from the property line? And that's why we have the application before you.
And um with the extension, um, will you also be uh, looks like you're gonna be extending the driveway too to match that with as well?
I had not necessarily planned to do that, I figured I would open sort of have the apron open at the base, but if that is something that would not be a barrier, I I wouldn't mind having that, but I I wasn't going to request any additional things beyond this.
Just the garage would be once it's extended?
Yes.
Um, for the size of the garage, because you're expanding the garage to get the relief on the side step back, what determined the size of the garage? Because it looks like it's a little larger than a two-car garage current that you're looking to propose.
Uh, I was in consultation with an architect, he advised that a two-car garage that would not be uh, extremely narrow as the current one-car garage is would need slightly more than the current existing space for the garage at this point in time, because the existing garage is just narrow, there isn't much room on either side once you go to open the car door, so I wanted to make sure we had enough room to get both vehicles in there, car doors open and not necessarily be dinging the other vehicle or having to hold the car door partially open and not fully extended.
Uh, it looks like the current plan uh, extends over the existing concrete pad, are you planning to replace the concrete slab?
I'm planning to have the concrete slab broken up uh, to ensure that when I go to build, I have something I believe it is four feet down is the appropriate thing, uh, don't quote me, I'd have to ask your building permit office. But I was gonna have that broken up and have one continuous pad at the same level uh, going across for the existing span that I have proposed.
And you intend to, once it's completed, it'll be seamless like it's always been there, it's not gonna be the same siding, same roofing, everything?
So I'm going to take the siding from the side of the house and I'm going to use that on the front. I'm going to try and match as best I can. If anything has to be changed, my plan is to on the back, go ahead and put new siding, so that way the existing siding would match the front, so the face of the so the part of the garage that would be facing would get the majority of the existing siding that has been exposed to the elements for I'm not sure how many years, um, and the rest of it would do the side and just when we get towards the back, I would any amount that had to be new, I would put in over there.
Okay.
Will the so I understand that by the drawing of the the existing driveway or garage will be like a little more than half of the garage door? Is the garage door currently extend beyond the existing driveway?
The, the garage door that's proposed?
Yes.
Yes, it would go beyond, my understanding is that it would go slightly beyond the existing driveway. Um, I I did not necessarily have that piece measured in detail, um, I apologize, I did not think about that.
That's okay, um, I'll just mention that if you do decide to pay to the other's full door width, you'll have to check because that could require another variance depending on what you're allowed with as of your driveway.
Understood.
And note that driveway vendors don't always know the code, I would talk to these folks instead of the driveway.
No, I was gonna consult with your building department over there.
We've seen a lot of, a lot of folks come in and they're, they're surpassed code and all they were told is by the vendor that it would be, it should be okay.
Well, a- as you can see, I've come to you guys before I have
Yep.
taken any further steps.
And then my other question was, uh, on the, your neighbor on the west side, how do they feel about this proposed setback change?
Uh, when we had discussed it, uh, there was no issue at that point in time. Um, I believe you're in the room this evening. So if, please feel free to inquire with them if they have any issues.
Um, right, it's up to one foot past the garage.
Be can pay.
For pavement, correct?
At, at the top of the garage.
At the top of the garage, so you can have pavement or your asphalt pavement to no further wider than one foot of the garage. But the bottom has to taper down to 24 feet, correct? So at the bottom, it's no bigger than 24 feet wide. But then it can extend up up to one foot past the garage, not the door, the garage.
Yes, correct.
Just so you have that information for yourself.
Thank you, I greatly appreciate the information.
Do you have anything else that you wanna discuss?
Uh, this should be noted that the neighbor on the west side, their property does have an elevation that declines.
Okay.
I would say in the neighborhood of the height of this podium. Um, so that's the only other thing to bear in mind that sort of right on that property line is.
They just go downhill?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. At the bottom one. Equal of the building, so, okay.
Um, I did wanna let the board members know that a minimum width for a one-car garage is typically 12 feet minimum. And then for a two-car garage, it is usually 22 feet minimum. He's asking for 26.
Right, and then he, I think the explanation was based on opening doors, right?
Trying to give everybody the knowledge.
Thanks. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in regards to this application? Please come forward, state your name and address, please. Uh, Mr. Mayman, if you just wanna come up with a thought?
My neighbor next door, well, Ravens Road.
What was your name again, I'm so sorry?
Aubrey.
Nice to meet you.
Great, thank you ma'am.
What would you like to add?
So just um um, this is on, on me as first, uh, the actual line in the property, I had the I had to play survey, I had to play surveys and the previous owner, I had it staked out so I can tell, because it, my line goes beyond the hill. And so I am lost at the exact distance from the hill. But I paid to get it surveyed, so I would know where everything is, someone had a loss where my line is right now versus this property, that's all I have to add.
Um, Heather, on the display, we have this moved to the instrument survey map. And then we probably need to.
Yeah, I was looking for that today, I couldn't find it, so.
So in terms of how close to your property line, from your property or from his property line over, he's asking to make the garage no wider than 5.2 feet.
Okay, but what I'm saying is not on my property line.
Right, no, it won't be.
That's what I'm saying, and I just don't, I mean, that, one of the reasons why I surveyed it was so that I didn't have to second guess this, but the previous owner moved it, so I just wanted to make that point.
Right.
Um, other than that.
Yeah, they won't be able to like come any closer to yours.
Because it's kind of, it's kind of hard for me to get track of it, because
Right.
the way it comes down the hill and then there's.
Yeah, and it's not quite a complete straight line either, I see it narrows down at the bottom, so that makes it a little bit more challenging.
It's unique for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but that's all I had. Thank you so much.
You're not opposed to it.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in regards to this application? No, did you wanna add anything else, Mr. Mayman? Application is closed.
Madam Chair, with regard to application number ZBA 2025-060 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, two has considered all relevant information, and three has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed extension will match the existing house and garage. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, the variance requested is necessary to extend the garage and it is the only location possible on the property. The variance requested is not substantial, as the variance requested is for a two-feet-10-inch um is for two-feet-10 inches, which is less than the permitted, wait a minute, less, sorry, let me say it again. As the variance requested is for two-feet-10 inches less than the permitted side setback. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. The neighboring property is sloped to about three feet higher than the applicant's property. The slope has bushes and plants on it preventing erosion. The difficulty relating to the variance was self-created due to the applicant's desire to extend the garage to accommodate two vehicles. To be a further result, the based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the variance as presented.
I'll second. Seconded by Heather, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, application 2025-061-062 Chipotle Mexican Grill.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Uh, Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, 530 State Route 104, Ontario, New York. Um, here for Chipotle Mexican Grill. Uh, we're asking to have the uh, the logos on the digital pickup. Uh, they're not really a, a directional, they're kind of a small totem, uh, four-foot in height, eight inches uh, in a triangular fashion. Uh, the, the logos are not merely decorative, they're integral part of Chipotle's national branding. Uh, these uh, these logos would not be visible from either West Henrietta or Lehigh Station Road. Actually, you'll have to be on the property uh, looking for the areas for the digital pickup to, to notice these uh, logos, uh, five inches round, I think they come out to about 0.25 square feet of uh, actual size. Um, so the, there would be no undesirable change to uh, the character of the neighborhood, uh, because you're not gonna be able to see them from anywhere but on the property itself. And the really no other way to achieve the corporate brand but to incorporate the logos with the signage. Uh, the variance is not substantial, as I said, I think they're 0.25 square feet. Um will not have an adverse effect on the physical environment conditions. And uh, I guess I guess they, they always say the one, it's always self-created, but uh, again, it's, it's very minimal in size.
Um, Mr. Ray, I do have some questions for you.
Okay.
More pertaining to um, the location, can you explain where they're gonna be located? It looks like they're gonna be in the actual asphalt of the parking lot, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, the, the last ones we did, they relocated onto the concrete, I would assume they would do the same thing. Um, and I think the dots are kind of uh, you, you have to, you have to look at the line more than the dot. It's gonna be on that concrete area. So the one is gonna direct people to come inside, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Chipotle. You order ahead on the app, you pay ahead, you come in, your food is in a designated area and you just pick it up and go, there's no communicating with uh, servers or anything like that. So these would actually be on the, the concrete curbing.
So your, your pickup order is already out there at the ballards? Am I?
No, no. Um, the one up at the end of the drive-through is showing you can drive through that area and pick up your food. The other one over by the building is uh, I guess it's the lower one on the site plan. That's just telling you that you can go inside there and pick your food up. It's not at the Ballard, no, it's not.
So it's basically a reserved, reserved area for those who are just gonna run in and get it?
Yes.
So they can leave their car there, run inside?
Well, it just.
Or go to the drive-through.
Just giving you the direction, you know, that you can do either, you can go inside, pick it up, or go through the drive-through.
Oh, so actually both of them are, they're both on the grass, not on?
Is, is it green space or is it concrete, I'm, I'm not 100% sure.
They're both on green space, it um, it's, the site plan is a little hard to read, uh, to be honest, so, but it makes.
Yeah, it's a little small. But it is at the end of the, you can see where they go from the line or from the picture of the totem over in the line, so that the green dot is actually a little deceiving, it's, it's not in the parking lot.
Okay, I, I have no, no further questions, any other questions from members of the board?
So with these two Ballers that are going in, um if it just said digital pickup, it didn't have the little logo on it, would there be a need for variances?
No.
Probably not.
Probably not?
Mm-hmm. I mean, they're not necessarily directional because it's digital pickup.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, you know, but, but they are placed so that you know where to go to get the digital pickup, so I mean.
So it's almost like directional.
Yes, it's a little ambiguous the way the code's written. But I, I think they're directional, but they do have the logo, so.
Because the logo is what makes it necessary for the.
For an application.
The logo that, you know, regarding the.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're, yeah, I, I just think that, you know, adding two variances to this property in perpetuity uh, or just a logo that's not gonna be noticed by most people. I mean, it says the digital pickup, sure, I mean, yeah, then you know where to stop to, you know, get you the pickup, but I really don't believe that it's a unnecessary addition uh, to have two more variances for that.
Um.
Variances can be limited to what's presented, size and location.
Yep, true, yeah.
So similar variances have, have been granted, I know that Starbucks over on uh, Highland Drive has their logo on their Ballards.
Right, they had come forth as well.
Now, can I ask you a question? I'm assuming you, you do the sign packages for other Chipotles in the region or area, right? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, we do quite a few, actually.
Uh, has there been studies done or have you guys received any feedback on um, say, another municipality didn't, you know, grant these digital pickups if there was issues or conflicts with figuring out where to get their orders?
I, I really don't have any knowledge of that, I can't say that um that the other sites I've done, all of these Ballards totems are uh, are branded with the with the logo, I have not done any without.
Oh, so it's a, it's a new part of the sign package, right?
No, no. Webster has them, the city has them. Um, the, they're all, I've done them in Buffalo, Syracuse. And everything is branded on these uh, digital pickup totems. They're usually much taller than these, these are shorter, we're typically seven feet tall, but that's, you know, the difference in these.
Okay.
Actually, is there a reason why the A1 wasn't moved a little bit closer to the building? Because it seems it's five-parting spaces and I can just see somebody wanting to pick up their food and they're gonna wanna pull up to the building. They know their food's inside there. Um, is there a reason why it was set out so far from the building?
Yes, there's a reason why they're not in parking spots, I guess.
They are too, is that they're, because the ones, the ones for Starbucks.
It's a building sign.
So you got them?
A1 is a building sign.
A1's the drive-through, right?
Well, A1 has the, it's a pickup.
Yeah, but it's to go through the drive-through to get your, to go and get your order, so.
Right.
A lot of the stuff is actually like mentioned in the app when you digitally place your order, which is why it's a digital on it.
So. Right, and I, I understand that.
Yeah.
That, there's no arrow on it to say digital pickup, go into the drive-through, it just says that our digital pickup was you just pulled up to that spot, you didn't have to get in line, just stop there, went and got your got back in the car and left.
I think there's a directional on the driveway that says digital pickup ahead. It's on both sides of the, where you enter into the drive-through?
Oh, it's up to that here, yeah.
So that would be the indicator as you're pulling in, where to go through the drive-through portion. Or where this A1 is located. Those parking spots in particular. And there may be metal signs at this point saying digital pickup.
Oh, it says digital pickup on, okay, so I didn't, I didn't notice that before. So digital pickup on the road.
Right.
With an arrow, and then there's the Ballard.
Correct.
That's also.
Okay. I think it's more so to give people the visual is because we're all, let's just be honest, we're all moving 100 miles a minute to say, oh, digital pickup, I can go inside or I can go to the drive-through.
That's correct, and when you go inside, there is a, it's kinda like a cubby in the wall and your, your orders sitting there waiting for you.
Yeah. All right, any further questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the audience? Application is closed.
All right, Madam Vice Chair, with regard to application number ZBA 2025-061 and 062 for an area variances, I move to approve as follows. Whereas zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information and has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances, now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals. To the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances now, therefore be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact. The variances will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The neighborhood is a commercial area with other businesses similar to the applicant. In, in the neighborhood that has additional signage with, uh, with branding. The variances cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. The variances requested, um, is, is not substantial as the applicant is asking for additional signage to help brand identity. The variances will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. The difficulty relating to the variances was self-created. However, the benefits outweigh the negatives by allowing vehicles to easily locate, uh, where to go for their pickup orders. And be it further resolved, that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variances as presented.
I'll second.
Second in by John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed by Chris, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Application twenty twenty-five zero six three U R M C. Please just state your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, yep, Joshua Saxton, uh, Passer Associates, two four two West Main Street.
Thank you.
Um, and yeah, just a, a little history, I know a lot of people were on the board when we were here last year for. Uh, a lot more variances for some of the other signs that were on the, uh, building as well as wayfinding signs on the campus. Um, during that meeting, we were kind of in discussions on, um, you know, donors, there wasn't one selected at that time. Um, but, you know, we wanted to keep that open in case one was added, um, that, you know, future signs maybe were going to be proposed. Uh, and that's where we are today, um, with the single variance for the sign. Um, on, and then Heather, it's on page three of that document for the sign. Um, so it's located on the north face of the existing building, um. Where this kind of, uh, area is located, um, it's the O fifteen. Um, it's the Saunders Center addition that's going to be kind of on the other side. Of the, um, already existing kind of U of R, uh, University of Rochester sign that's on the kind of other side of the wall. Um, just located on the other corner, um, of that wall of the north face of the side, so. A visual from Highland, it's, it won't be as, um, close as the existing sign there. And then from Jefferson, as you're coming up from West Henrietta Road, um, going to be kind of, uh, shielded by. Um, some of the other buildings and signage.
Middle of the campus, right?
Yeah, yeah, essentially, it'll be in this corner here, um, and as you're probably coming around here. Um, you know, just the distance from the building, um, I know the existing U of R sign, you know, you can definitely see it from that area, but. Um, the additional sign, um, given the corner where it's going to be at, and, um, it is smaller than the existing U of R sign. Um, you know, as far as visual impact, it's going to be somewhat limited. Um, and I do know in the application, the entire sign, uh, package was included. Um, but the only one that was requiring a variance and why we're here tonight is for, um, the singular Saunders Center addition. Um, on the north face of the wall, the other ones were, um, just in the total sign package of additional signs that, um, didn't require any variances, so. Um, yeah, we're here to answer any questions that the board or the public may have.
So, donors for medical facilities are a good thing for sure. I'm curious, is there a contractual obligation to the quantity of times the name is on the building?
No.
Um, if you're, come up and say, please.
My name is Linda Gressel, I'm with the university, uh, there's not a contractual obligation for how many times the sign is on the building.
Thank you.
Is there a contract on how long the sign's there?
In perpetuity. As long as the building is lasting.
Sorry?
As long as the building is in use.
Oh, really?
In perpetuity.
Are there going to be any more requests for signs on this large building?
Can you just state your, uh, your address as well?
Yes, three hundred East River Road, Rochester, New York. Um, no, we don't foresee any additional signage needs for the donor.
Okay.
On the exterior.
When was the building built?
Well.
Uh, the building was open in phases, the campus.
That your name.
Uh, Ban Yannis, uh, with University Rochester, two seventy-one East River Road.
Thank you.
So the building will open up in phases, uh, with the first phase, which was the Ambulatory Surgery Center. At the end of twenty-one. And I think it was twenty-two, right, um, was the, the clinic building that you see there.
Okay, so in all intensive purposes, this building is now fully functional as it stands?
It is fully functional, yeah.
All phases complete?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do you plan on making any renovations or additions to the building in any of your culture?
Uh, interior, exterior.
Uh, more exterior.
No. I, I think we mentioned last time too, just the, uh, the importance of the design structure. Everything that went into the project with the reuse, uh, I don't foresee any modification to the exterior.
Okay, they won't be adding on to the building?
No.
Okay.
It's a great facility.
Sorry.
It's a great facility.
Just curious, has the existing wayfinding signage been proven effective? People are not getting lost?
Remarkably, yes.
Okay.
I mean, considering how big of a campus it is.
Yeah.
If you look at the amount of, like, I'm sure if you were to do an analysis, look at the, uh. Amount of signs in a, you know, corporate area compared to something else in the Jekyll's town.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was very well put together, so.
Good.
Designed very well.
Thank you. Any further questions from members of the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in regards to this? Application is closed.
Madam Vice Chair, with regards to application number Z B A twenty twenty-five dash zero six three for an area variance, I move to approve. As follows, whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information. Has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals makes the finding, following findings of fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. As it is one small additional sign on a huge building, consistent with the look and feel of the others. This is the donor acknowledgement that was previously discussed with the Z B A. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, because the donor who made this facility possible needs to be recognized on the building itself. The variance requested is not substantial, as additional wall sign looks at place on this building in the back where there's none. The variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions, it is a simple wall sign. The difficulty related to variance was self-created, given the choices for wall signage, uh, but this is appropriate for the structure. And be it further resolved, that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Chris, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thank you.
Good evening.
And application twenty twenty-five zero six four, the Shamrock Inn. Just state your name and address for record, please.
My name's Matthew Collins with the Shamrock Inn at three hundred Jefferson Road.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to highlight about your application or further explain?
The only thing I'd like to highlight is, we're just requesting to have the sign be kept up and a variance for that. Uh, for us just to be able to keep the L E D sign when we take possession of the building here in the next few weeks.
Anything in particular that you have questions in regards to this? L E D sign, what kind of messages are you going to put up?
Just weekly specials and fundraising events that we'll be doing for the local community, such as R A C has partnered with us for their Roar Day. At the end of October, and just being able to advertise events like that to further fundraise funds for these local universities and. Charities around them.
And you're familiar with the refresh rate limit?
Yes.
Any other questions for members of the board? Any questions for members of the audience? Application is closed.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Vice Chair, with regard to application number Z B A twenty twenty-five zero six four. For an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information. And has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore be it resolved, that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The sign is consistent with character of the neighborhood, as other businesses along the corridor feature similar signage. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. Alternatives are not feasible as a desired sign content necessitates both the proposed sign type and location. It is also noted that the sign currently exists. The variant requested is substantial, while the variance is substantial, remain, it remains consistent with the character of the neighborhood and aligns with existing signage in the area. The variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions. The variance is not anticipated to result in any negative physical or environmental impact at this time. The variance relating, or the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created, while the. Brands was self-created, it has been demonstrated to be reasonable based on the supporting findings of fact. And be it further resolved, based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
Second.
Seconded by John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Yeah, you sure you're on close? I propose to close the meeting at seven forty-two P M. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Thank you.